Call the meeting to order, please. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming up. Will Fatima Malara please stand up? If anybody needs translation in Spanish, that's the person that's going to be doing it. Next, I'm going to turn over the school choice for 2019-2020 school year to Dr. Bork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The public hearing tonight is not a vote on school choice, however, under Massachusetts general law, seventy-six, section twelve B, every year the district must decide on school choice. I recommend this year again to forego school choice in order to ensure that we have seats in pre-K through grade twelve for Chelsea students first. However, in the future, I think it is something we may want to dive a little bit into and see if it is a model that would work for Chelsea in future years. But for this year, I again ask that you will vote no on school choice. The vote will formally be on the agenda on Thursday, March twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Dr. Bork. We have public speaking or public comment on this. If you'd like to speak, you have to state your name and address. Okay, the public speaker is over. Move on next to the 2020 budget. I'm going to ask all the school community members here. I'm going to let you question or say, have a statement. And then after that, I'm going to turn it over to the public. We're here to listen to them tonight. So I'm going to turn this right now over to Dr. Bork again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to have a few brief framing remarks, and then I'm going to ask Executive Director of Administration and Finance Monica Lamboy to come forward for the budget presentation. And after the budget presentation, we will open it up for public comment. Tonight, we are presenting the fiscal twenty budget for public comment. As we've stated, we have a $2 million gap this year, a budget gap that now is a fourth year in a row for us in terms of closing our gaps and our financial needs to educate our students. To close the gap, we base our decisions on the needs of our students first. We use data to balance our budget and to make objective decisions. We try as best we can to make changes to the budget that enhance our teachers. And if cuts are to be made, we try to make them where the least impact to our staff will take place. We look at hopefully retirements, attrition on natural teachers saying that they are not returning because they're going into another profession or they're moving to another state. A few changes that we have made since our last community meeting are the following. I want to make sure we're all up to date with the most recent changes to the budget. As you know, we go through this budget process, we collect the feedback, and from the feedback, if we can go back and make changes, we do. Many years prior to this year, we have not been able to make those changes. But this year, we added back the two foreign language teachers at Chelsea High School. However, in order to do that, we had to take an additional position from Bridge Academy. Still, you'll see tonight that the overall average class size in Bridge Academy will go from fourteen point five to sixteen point five even with the cuts. We have deferred the addition of the Spanish electives to support our students obtaining high scores on the AP exams and the sale of biliteracy until we can get some money from the state. We have taken additional funds from facilities in order to add back an ELL position at the Brown Middle School. We will, however, need to prioritize adding back the money to facilities if we are successful with our advocacy in getting more funds in the coming months from the legislature. We cannot allow our buildings to deteriorate. Finally, I caution all of us, this budget is the fourth year of consecutive cuts. It's painful. It hurts, and it hurts all of us, and it hurts us personally. Some of us, yes, more personally than others, and I recognize that. It hurts our schools. I anguish over every cut for four years. It impacts our students and our educators. They are not easy to decide and not easy to make. Even with budget cuts, we do still need to continue to grow and improve as a school district. We need to continue to meet the needs of our students. We need to meet the accountability requirements from the state, and we need to fulfill those unfunded mandates from the state. But I caution all of us, we can't turn against one another or turn against the programs that are meeting the needs of our students. We must, and that's capitalized, must, direct our frustration and our anger and our advocacy where it needs to go. Our leaders at the state level, our legislators are the ones to solve this structural financial problem that is crushing, crushing school districts across the state. And I've talked about it for four years. And it is not just Chelsea legislators. We need a majority of legislators from all over the state, from communities beyond the boundaries of Chelsea. They must all hear our frustrations for our students and for our staff. The solution must be now, this year, this spring. For four years, we are now at the precipice. They have $500 million, and they could use it and do something this year. I remind you, we are underfunded by $6.5 million in health insurance. That's 6.5 million away from that classroom, away from the teachers, away from social workers, away from programming. We are underfunded by another 11.7 million in special education, away from regular education, away from the classroom teacher, away from the social worker. We are underfunded and economically disadvantaged. The Foundation Budget Reform Commission, which I served for two years, recommends fifty to one hundred percent above the per pupil rate. The governor has funded us at forty-two percent. That's appalling, and they don't fund homeless students who are not on the database. We are underfunded in the English language learner rates. We're underfunded in circuit breaker for our outplacement special ed students. We are underfunded in our charter school reimbursement. There is nothing more for regular education and public education to take, and yet we are mandated to balance our budgets. This is not a Chelsea schools problem. This is a problem across the state, and it is only the state legislature that can solve it, and they have money to do so. So rather than turn against each other, let's put our anger and our frustration and our advocacy where it belongs, because I know I have continued to do it, and I will be doing it again, starting on March twenty-second at the State House at the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I hand it back to you.
Hold on for one second. I just wanted to thank Monica for putting this book together, the budget, and delivering it to our houses. That was nice of you. So I wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I'm Monica Lamboy, the Executive Director of Administration and Finance for the Chelsea Schools. I'm here tonight to offer you details in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. Our topics for this evening include some information on how public funding for schools is allocated in Massachusetts. The superintendent has very eloquently explained the situation in which we are at. We want to offer to the community a little bit of understanding how the budget is developed, looking at our revenues and expenditures for this year, what we're doing with them, the forecast for fiscal year twenty, our expenditure forecast, and our budget balancing plan, which everybody is eager to hear. What we're going to hear is that while the funding has gone up for the schools, it has not gone up to cover the costs that every year go up, our cost of living, our step increases, our health insurances. So while we are having increases, they are not keeping up with the baseline needs of the schools. It's put us in a fourth year of a cut situation. So how is public education funding in Massachusetts derived? The first thing that the state of Massachusetts does is develop what they call the foundation budget. They look at all of the children in Chelsea, and they say, based on their profile, whether they're English language learners or whether they're low income, what grade they're in, how much does it cost to educate those students? That's called the foundation budget. Following that, they look at the local revenue picture. They look at property taxes. They look at local receipts, and they say, what can the local community contribute? They do this in cities and towns and regional districts across the state. That's called the local contribution. Then, the difference between what they consider to be the appropriate local contribution and what they consider to be the appropriate funding for schools, that is what the city contributes, what the state contributes. It's called chapter seventy funding. So we often talk about how important our chapter seventy funding is. That's how that funding source is calculated by the state. Once we've now looked at all of the children that live in Chelsea, a portion of those monies are taken aside for the charter school students and those students who choice out into other school districts. Those are taken off the top, and that which is left is what we have available to the Chelsea Public Schools after our charter school students and after our choice students are taken out. By law, there's a minimum net school spending that we have to spend for our students. If we ever go below that number, we will have financial penalties for the district. This has happened to communities. It's, I don't believe it's ever happened to Chelsea, but we've gotten close. So there are financial penalties. We have to be very, very careful to make sure we spend those dollars that the school committee allocates for the educational purposes. And as mentioned, efforts are underway to fix the foundation budget. Here's sort of a graphic representation of what I just said. If you imagine that as this circle is the cost for educating all students who live in Chelsea, that's called the foundation. The first thing they do is they say, what's the state share and what's the local share? As we can see, it's a hundred. From this circle is taken out a wedge, which is the charter school tuition from the total, and we work with what is the remaining, which is a big number, but again, it does not totally meet the needs. Local municipalities are allowed to add additional funds voluntarily. There's no maximum spending that's been established by the state. So what we see happen to communities all over is there's a great variation in the amount of spending per pupil that each community can and has allocated for that purpose. As you can see, Chelsea is the bar in the middle. These are 2017 data points where we were spending thirteen thousand eight sixty-two per student. But you can see there's a number of communities that are spending more, others also spending less, and there are some certainly that are spending even less than those that are on there. So there is still quite a bit of variation. Looking further into the state budget issue, this is a graphic that was prepared by a nonprofit group advocating for schools. In 1992, state budget, state school reform changed the way that school funding was calculated, the formula it's called. What you can see from the first half on the left side is from 1992 to about 2002, even if you control for inflation, more dollars were going into education each year. Since 2002, which is the right side, the funding has been flat to down when you control for inflation. It's no surprise that the fourth year of budget cuts is before us. It's no surprise that it's particularly painful because it's layered on top of prior years with of cutting. To offer detail to what the superintendent has spoken about in terms of the costs for health insurance, the gaps, on the left-hand side is what the state calculated for us in 2018 for what it would cost, what they funded toward health insurance. That's the blue bar. If you look on the right-hand side, what did it actually cost us? It cost us fifteen point two million dollars against an eight million dollar worth of funding, a gap of six and a half million dollars where we are obliged to pay for health insurance for our staff. We were six and a half million dollars less than we actually needed. Now, let's turn to special education, similar pattern, where the foundation budget funded us for seven point four million dollars of special education costs. Our total cost was over nineteen million dollars. That translates into a nearly twelve million dollar gap. Now, when our students are in special education, we are legally obligated to provide the services that are in their IEP documents. So what happens is when we have to spend these monies on our special education, we are, have to do something else, we have to do less of something else in order to meet those needs. So turning more toward our revenue and expenditure for the current year that we're in, just to give people a picture of where the monies are coming from for our school year. As you can see here, the largest single funding source that we have available is our chapter seventy funding. It's the red one on the right. However, the city of Chelsea has really come forward and not only met the minimum that the state requires, they are funding us for items that do not count toward net school spending, such as school buses, such as crossing guards, and they have offered a voluntarily additional amount to the schools. And that is not without pain on the city side as well. We also have grant funds. We're always trying to secure grant funds, and we have revolving funds, which largely is our lunch fund. Now, how do we spend these monies? We spend them on our people. It's a school district. We have many, many people engaged in educating our students, from our crossing guards to our cafeteria workers, to our teachers, to our paraprofessionals and social workers, and I can go on for the many people that get up every day and come to serve the children of Chelsea Public Schools. We have employee benefits. We have the cost of our facilities to keep our buildings in good shape. There is data that shows that educational performance is tied to the quality of the environment where people are studying. If the wind is blowing or if the roof is leaking, kids are distracted, and they're not learning as much as they could in a good facility. Information technology is the backbone of learning today. Professional development to make sure our teachers are always on top of the latest trends in education. Special education, supplies, books and equipment, transportation, and of course, our utility budget with the amount of large buildings that we have, we actually spend millions of dollars on utilities. What does this look like? Again, our largest expenditure is for our people, their benefits and their labor, and you can see the other cost categories. So moving forward, what have we done with our monies in recent years? Among many, many, many accomplishments, we opened the Chelsea Opportunity Academy this year for fifty students. They're located inside of the Chelsea High School building at present, but it's a very unique environment for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. We also proudly opened the Morris H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School, and I kind of put the pictures in because I think this building is so stunning that I didn't want to miss the photos in the presentation. The revenue forecast for this year. Some of the positive forces is that the governor has been hearing from communities and has made some changes to the formula that calculates funding for schools. However, there is a number of downward forces on our revenue as well. Our charter school reimbursement has gone down. He has changed the way that charter school reimbursement is calculated that was not in our favor. In addition, we are experiencing for the first time in a large number of years, lowered enrollment in Chelsea Public Schools. And I want to show folks those changes in a number of slides that are going to follow because this does have short and long-term implications for our funding. The number of English language learner students credited in the budget has been reduced because the governor has changed the testing threshold at which students are considered to be outside of the ELL program, even though by law, we are still obligated to give them services for several years after that. It's an area of deep concern to us. And then neutral is that the number of economically disadvantaged students identified by the state, which we do believe understates the number of economically disadvantaged, for the most part, hasn't changed this year. So in some detail, changes to the foundation budget that the governor has done, you can see it on this chart. He's increased the general education reimbursement. The out-of-district special education has gone up about $2,000 per student. However, that's a mere fraction of the gap that exists in special education. ELL for high schools, he had committed to increasing that, and you can see the details there. Overall, we've experienced a 5.7% increase per pupil. So again, per pupil, so that factor of how many pupils we have is directly related. So even in a year when the per pupil is going up, if our actual pupils goes down, it affects us in terms of our growth. Okay, now here's the negative trends, and this is some serious information. The changes in enrollment and the changes in the ELL criteria have reduced our foundation budget by about 1.7 million dollars. If we had the exact number of students we had a year prior with the funding rate that the governor has established, we would have 1.7 million dollars more to work with than we have right now. So we are feeling the impacts of this change in enrollment. Fewer students enrolled, fewer students eligible for the ELL supplement, fewer special education students, and our charter reimbursement, we lost $500,000 on our charter reimbursement based on the change in formula. Moving into enrollment. What we can see here from this long graph is that Chelsea experienced many years of extremely rapid growth in our student body. This upswing was incredible to deal with, and everybody in this room that's contributed has really made Chelsea schools what it is. However, we are seeing flattening to downturn, and the downturn is not seeming to stop just yet in some areas. So it's a pretty dramatic change from what people are accustomed to, the kind of conversation. This table is a more detailed breakdown, looking at the change in enrollment by grade. This is October first is the official date for school enrollment calculations. What you can see here at the early learning center, which is the top row, no change between 2007, the last column is 2017 to 2018, which is how we base our budget. We've had some reduction at our elementary school level. We've had increases at the middle school level. We had a steep decline of 178 students October to October at Chelsea High School, the Chelsea Opportunity Academy increase. In looking at where we are in March, I want to say that the elementary schools seem to have stabilized in terms of enrollment, but we've actually had an increasing decline in Chelsea High School. From October first to March first, we lost another 55 students at Chelsea High School, bringing us down to 1,305. What does this mean for class sizes today? In looking at the second half of the year enrollment in different course areas, looking at classes that had ten or more students, ten or more seats empty, so out of thirty potential seats, these classrooms had ten or more empty. So 14 out of 48 ELA, 25 out of math, science, history. So we are seeing very small classrooms. Even our elective classes are currently rolled at 50 to 75% of the classroom capacity. Maybe a more tangible example is just to look at our Algebra I. These are the different courses that are offered in Algebra I. The horizontal line is the maximum, and now it's not always good to be at the exact maximum, but the horizontal line is the maximum number of seats that would be available in our Algebra classes. What you can see for reality is we have 11, 12, 14, 12, and we only have one class that's over 20 in the current spring semester. Now, let's look back a little further because we've had such a big arc. What did it, what was it like before the arc started? So if we go back to fiscal year 2005, a lifetime ago, you can see the student enrollment in the top row, the number of teachers. In this case, it's teachers, folks that are in the teachers bargaining group, so it could be teachers, social workers, counselors. The total number of teachers and the number of students per teacher. So you can see in five-year increments, we had 13 students per teacher, 12.2 students per teacher. 2015 was clearly a very intense year with staffing. And then now in fiscal 2019, we're down to 11 and a half, so lower students per teacher than any of those five-year periods before. If I apply the change to March, if I bring us up to this month, we're down to 11 students per teacher at Chelsea High School. That's just a ratio. So what do our revenue picture look like? This first top row is the foundation budget of the chapter seventy funding plus the city funding. To that, we add the funds that are taken away or allocated toward our charter schools and our school choice. Here's where you can see off to the right where the revenue went down by 515,000. So we had 2.7 million dollars worth of revenue for charter schools that went down to 2.2 million, and our actual charter school allocation went up from 14.8 million to 15.2 million. So that's a substantial impact, a $922,000 shift in one year. Then the city of Chelsea does allocate funds for us, and that was, brings us to our total anticipated budget this year of 95.5 million, or 3.2 million above what we had last year, actually the current year. So what are we going to do with our funding?
So the key initiatives for this year in terms of our ability and our desire to continue to grow, to continue to meet the needs of our students, and to, and to make sure that we are meeting accountability requirements, both academically, but also, you know, the long-range student goals in terms of the deeper learning, in terms of college and career readiness. So we are expanding the Camino's program to grade six at the Kelly School. Last year, we expanded it to grade five. We are moving it into grade six. We do believe for a number of reasons that this is a, is a strong initiative for us. It doesn't cost us much, other than maybe some professional development and support, and we are going to provide a bilingual reading teacher for the entire Kelly School. At the same time, expanding allows our students and families to start to maintain their home language. We believe deeply in multilingualism. We want to make sure that we're building a continuum of support and services from kindergarten through grade 12 for students to maintain their home language, in particular, the Spanish language. The Kelly School is graciously agreed to go through this restructuring for, to take on grade six. As we move forward, at the middle school, to continue that continuum, we are adding Spanish as a world language at the Brown and the Clark Avenue School. In the future, we get more money from the state, we'll include the right. The Brown and the Clark Avenue School are prioritized because we need to add a specialist. We need to make sure our, and it will be offered as a specialist, but it will also allow us to be able to meet contractual obligations in terms of prep period for our teachers. We are also looking at continued expansion of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. We are budgeted this year for 50 students. However, Mr. Schmidt and his staff have actually taken on 60 students, and we haven't given them any extra money. But in the three-year plan, they are budgeted to go forward to 100 students. These are 100 students that we are meeting their needs in a flexible schedule, in a flexible schedule for our schools. We are meeting the needs of students who are overage, undercredited. We are also, through the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, meeting the needs of the Department of Education when they say, reduce your dropout rate, increase your graduation rate. And we are doing that through the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, and we're very proud of the work that has gone on there. The Department of Education has commended Mr. The Department of Education has commended Mr. Principal Schmidt and his team, as well as they've come and visited multiple times, and we want to continue that work there. We are also having a continued emphasis on our early college program. It's another area where even despite four years of budget cuts, we have been able to continue to focus on our students first and to grow programs that meet their needs. This program allows our students to take college classes, get credit, and to reduce the overall cost of college debt by starting down that road of the associate's degree before they leave our schools. And they can leave, hopefully, the goal is, if you remember on the five-year plan, to leave our Chelsea High School with both an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same, on the same day, on the same platform. The next initiative that we are continuing, the expansion of academic offerings for students with special needs, including autism. We have a growing student population of autism in our school district, and so we need to open up additional classrooms. We open up an additional classroom, we also need to add a paraprofessional. We are going to add the pre-kindergarten teacher and paraprofessional for social communications, which is our autism program, at the Early Learning Center. We'll do that at the half-year point, that's when we anticipate the numbers to really peak. That way, we'll take a budget savings by not adding the classroom until January. We're going to add a teacher, special education inclusion at the Wright Middle School. Ideally, if we get more, and this is the budget cuts from two or three years ago, where we had to cut middle school inclusion teachers, and we have seen the numbers and the caseloads start to rise for our inclusion special education teachers, and we want to make sure we're looking at parity with other schools. We will add at the Wright Middle School. If we get more money this spring, we will also be prioritizing adding a special education inclusion teacher at the Brown Middle School and the Clark Avenue Middle School. Please understand that the middle schools and the elementary took the majority of the hits for three years before this year. We're going to add a social communication, again, that's our autism program, at Chelsea High School. Our autism program, we began it in the pre-K, then we went to kindergarten, we've gone up every year by another one or two grades, and so now our social communications program will be at Chelsea High School. And we are going to increase, because the number of special education students is increasing dramatically at the early childhood program, we will be adding a half-time special education clerk for the clerical support in the special education department. Right now, they are running an ELC department, special education department, with just a half-time clerk, and the numbers are far too great now at this point. And then, yes, the succession planning. As we've talked about, and you've, you know, heard before, we have had succession planning, it's a two-year program, and certainly it is all of the cuts, the retirements at central office. Currently at central office, we do not have a business manager, we do not have an HR director. And so, and also Deputy Superintendent Linda Bro will be leaving, retiring in September, so we will be cutting her position, not backfilling it, so that's a savings of .75.
Moving forward into looking at our expenditures, both our baseline and for the programs. So some of the forces that affect our budget every year, again, is the cost of our staffing through cost of living agreements, adjustments through step increases, our healthcare and insurance, we estimate a 3.2% increase in that. Our special education out-of-district, we're projecting a 5% increase in those costs. In addition, we've had a challenging year being able to complete all the evaluations for our students due to shortfalls in our hiring of the school psychologists, and so we've had to use outside contract dollars. Other forces are aging buildings, require more maintenance, most of our schools are approaching the 20-year mark, and many of their systems are going to be either becoming obsolete or coming down. Succession planning temporarily, and we'll get into the details for that. And then, this year, we do have a number of really tremendous grants where we made a lot of accomplishments, but they are coming to an end. So choices have to be made whether we're going to continue the programmatic options with general funds, or whether we're going to let those sort of forward-thinking initiatives come to an end. Looking at the numbers, what you can see here is kind of the breakdown of those different types of expenses that I mentioned. Labor, insurance, special education tuition, succession planning, in this case, is strictly the fiscal year '20 succession planning. Formerly grant-funded, $660,000, these are positions that are currently on staff that would otherwise come to an end. The expansion of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, new positions at the high school, school resource proposals, which are rather modest compared to our overall budget. Overall, what we're looking at is a gap of 1.9 million between the new monies that the state and the city are giving us compared to how our costs are going up. So, the rest of our presentation sadly is how do we close that gap? How do we accomplish that without affecting our programs? At a high level, how are we going to, and actually, there's a number on the right-hand side that's off. How are we going to close 1.9 million? We're proposing reductions in positions. We did find two duplicate positions that were in the budget that are not needed, transferring one position onto a grant that should have been on a grant this year, retirements where we know that some folks are going to be leaving us, we're assuming that their backfill will be backfilled at a lower pay rate than the current incumbent. Chelsea High School is reducing its operating budget by $100,000. We're reducing contractual services by 78, 400. These were actually monies that were put aside for succession planning in the current year. So we are showing the school committee how we're transitioning from the 2019 succession plan into the 2020, so those dollars that we don't need anymore for that purpose, we're cutting them. Actually, there's two rows, both the contractual services and the other one. And sort of miscellaneous savings district-wide when we looked at all the positions. Turning to our schools, our specific schools. At the Early Learning Center, we are going to continue to expand our services for students with autism, clerical support for autism, and we should have mentioned it on the previous slide, the expansion of the Camino's program at the ELC, currently at two classrooms, is going to change to four classrooms. Those four classrooms are then going to advance through each grade, so that we will have four Camino's classrooms per grade moving its way up through our schools. How are we going to do this? As you can see, the position's there, a half a teacher, two half-professional, paraprofessionals, which ends up being a 1.0, and the increase for the clerk. Moving on, at our elementary schools, the key initiatives are expansion of the Camino's program to the sixth grade, the bilingual reading teacher, and I'm hoping we can get it done, is a renovation of the playground this summer. If it's not this summer, we're going to key it up as quickly as we can. It's going to be amazing. And here are the position changes there. We are proposing some cuts to our elementary school, which are being largely offset by the increases elsewhere. And I have hard copies for folks once we get through the whole presentation, so you don't have to take notes. At the middle schools, we're adding the Spanish at Brown and Clark Ave. We're adding a special education teacher at the Wright. We are adding either a math or ELA at the Brown or Clark Ave funded by grants, and right sizing the ELL program. Here, we're proposing to reduce four foundational ELL classrooms at the Brown and at the Clark Ave. My previous slides here should have actually said five, because we did have five on our calculations. This is correct because we've taken one of those off the table and reinstated one of the positions at the Brown. The world language, the grant-funded positions, and special education. In addition, two outreach workers and one teacher specialist that are currently on grants will be moved over onto the general fund so that we don't lose those valuable programs. At Chelsea High School, we're going to have staff reductions to align with projected enrollment, adding the teacher for autism program, right sizing the special education inclusion services to align with projected enrollment, same thing for the ELL program, and we're going to add two building substitutes to ensure coverage for teacher absences. So our largest change that we're proposing this year is at our Chelsea High School. On the left-hand side, you can see a series of cuts that were hard thought through, are not easy to make, but I will show you that we will still have very positive class sizes at the high school. On the right-hand side, we can see the social communication and the paraprofessional. And in addition, coming from grants, we are retaining the early college counselor position and a teacher for ELL and special education that will be converted from grant to general fund, and two current classroom monitors are going to be converted to building substitutes. So we are actually adding quite a bit of general funds as well at the high school. So what does this mean for our students? And we were very concerned to make sure that we still have a positive classroom environment for all of our students at the high school. What you see here is currently our January 2019 average class size by department, English Language Arts, Foreign Language, Math, Vis Ed, Science, et cetera. And as was mentioned, the Bridge Program has a smaller classroom size because of the students that require additional services. After we remake the cuts that we are proposing, we still have very positive classroom sizes that are certainly in the 2018-2020 range. Most of these areas are going up by 2 and 1/2 or less students per classroom, because if you imagine, you're now reallocating the same enrollment across the other classes. And our Bridge Program still stays at 16, just over 16 students per class. I know there'll probably be a lot of questions about that as we go forward. Chelsea Opportunity Academy, key initiatives, the continued expansion from 100, from 50 to 100, heading toward 150 over the next year. To do so, we're proposing to upgrade one of the teachers to the coordinator, and then add a teacher, an ELL half, which will be shared with Chelsea High School, a special education half that will be shared with Chelsea High School. And in addition, we will be moving a number of funds off of grants and onto the general fund, as was conceived of when the school was first planned. Our grant funding is a three-year grant funding that is gradually tiered down over those three years, and that's the commitment that we made to the funder to do that. So we're seeing our first year of those conversions. Overall, what does it look like per grade level? So, we are seeing a reduction of positions of about 21, we're seeing an addition of positions of 15, and we're seeing 10 and 1/2 positions that are currently grant-funded moving over onto the general fund to be able to continue the programs. Additions at the elementary school and the middle school, we are seeing reductions at the high school, and increases at Chelsea Opportunity Academy. In addition, we are reducing central administration by the deputy superintendent position will not be filled. Looking at it by type, administrative instructional, student support, paraprofessionals, clerical, and other, it's just another way to do that. So just in conclusion, because I know you want to be done, the forces that are affecting our budget this year, including the governor's budget increases, hopefully state budget reform, continued searching for grant funds any way we can. We are also looking at energy efficiency, we are doing many things on energy efficiency trying to reduce those costs. Budget challenges, our declines in enrollment, the change, the state-level change in the ELL criteria for funding, our cost of living and step increases, healthcare, expansion, special education costs, our aging facilities, and all of the great work at the Camino's is a cost-neutral because we are proposing to reallocate existing positions into the Camino's program. So with that, I thank you for your time.
I just want to let the public know that I cannot vote on the 28th on the budget, neither can Jeanette Valdez, because we have family members that work for the school department, and by law, we can't participate in a vote. So I wanted to let everybody know that now. Next, next week, we're going to have a school committee, subcommittee of the whole, where we're going to invite the teachers' union in at 5:30, and after that, we're going to invite this administration in at 6:30. So this way, all of us can ask questions.
Administration is also at the 5:30?
Well, they're invited to 5:30, but they're, it's the teachers' union at 5:30, so.
The 21st?
The 21st. It's an open meeting, anybody that's sitting here right now, you're welcome to come, provided there's room, it'll be in a conference room. There's where the real questions from the school committee will be asked, and we'll be listening to the teacher's side and the administration's side. So, I just want to let everybody know that. I'm going to open up the meeting now to the school committee members. I'm going to start with Kelly. If you have a question or a statement, and then I'm just going to move it along, and then we're going to open up for public comment.
Great. A quick question, Mr. Chairman, it's the, the meeting will be on the 20th or the 21st?
The 21st, I believe.
That's Thursday.
It's next Thursday, it's a week.
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a Wednesday, I made a mistake.
Great, okay, great.
It's, yeah, it's up to you to hold the 20th.
Monica, I just want to thank you, starting off by just thanking you for your presentation and your transparency and your patience. I have a couple of questions regarding the two positions, and I, the two positions that were added in the Foreign Language Department, and so, we're not cutting those positions anymore? Can you just clarify that for me?
Thank you for asking. At the community meeting, we had made a proposal to discontinue the French classes and to convert those dollars into more Spanish offerings. There was clearly a lot of emotion around that, and people who had made commitments to the language, the students spoke really eloquently about what it would mean for them and their aspirations. So we rethought that, and we will not be reducing the French teachers, but nor will we be adding the Spanish offerings that we had hoped to. As the superintendent said, should additional dollars come from the state, that would be really high on our recommended list, would be to offer some more deeper Spanish offerings at the high school.
Great. My next question is in regards to our lower enrollment. Can you just elaborate a little bit on why, why are our numbers decreasing? If you can just help us understand that a little bit.
Well, it's, no one can say exactly what's happening, but certainly the cost of housing in Chelsea has undertaken a remarkable transformation in a really quick time, and maybe not always apparent or transparent to most people, but our rental housing prices have nearly doubled, and the owner occupied has doubled in a very, very short time period. So we're assuming that many of our households are having financial pressures and having to move out. We're also just getting fewer students kind of coming in, so the tide has turned, that we're getting fewer students to come in from other countries to Chelsea. That may not be to do with the pricing, but that may have other, may also be due to the rent costs.
Great, great, thank you. My next question.
Well, Kelly, can you save your questions for next week? Because we got to, you know, move along. I just wanted, I just wanted to, you know, you can ask your question and make a brief statement, then we got to push it along so the public can speak.
Okay, last one, last one. I'll make it quick. You lost my train of thought, Richie. Okay, hold on. So in regard to the classroom sizes, does that reflect cold talk classes as well? Do we have a co-teaching?
I didn't hear what?
The, the classroom sizes, does that reflect the cold talk classrooms as well?
The co-teaching classrooms?
Mm-hmm.
It does, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. To everybody for making your time and your efforts to come here and, and such an important matter for our students, but also for every teacher that is here, we do appreciate everything that you do to teach our kids in our community, and we know that you are strong believers of the higher education in the city of Chelsea. Monica, so what I saw in the forecast, it is 5,285,000 that we need to have to continue to run the schools, and we are underfunded by, well, if we run it up to $2,000? 2 millions?
For this year, I would argue that we are, have been underfunded.
For this year, I, I would argue that we are, have been underfunded since 1993, because the formula hasn't kept up with inflation. So it's, it's underfunding that, I mean, certainly we could go back on the major cuts that have taken place over the last four years, but in particular, we would, we would also like to have complete funding so we could actually expand and be more innovative, more creative, to meet the needs of, of our students and to offer more things for our students. But we need money to be able to do that.
Yeah, thank you. And the other will be just a last invitation slash comment. It is that we are going to be at the State House on the 22nd, and we urge every parent, every one who has a day off to be with us there. I know that it is really important for us to mobilize our voices in, in one, and to make sure that the legislators, not only our local legislation, you know, Sadi Dominico, Danny Ryan, that are always strongly advocating for the education at the state level, and Ms. Burke, thank you, because we know that you are ardently, and, and the kids from the collaborative also, I know that they are always there with pushing the promissory act, that it is at the local state level that we need to put this pressure. And also, I would say at the local level, that we should also be asking, I know that the city manager has already graciously funded us instead of one hundred, one hundred and five percent, but if we can push for a little bit more, it would be great, because it is only right that we need to have our schools running, and it's not fair, you know, for the state to not give us the money that we need to continue to run business. And the way it's looking to me, because this is the fourth year that we are running on this deficit, it is that the way it is going is like they're trying to privatize our education, which is not right. So just hope to see everybody on the 22nd.
Thank you, Mrs. Esina. Ms. Kyle.
Well, it looks like the state is holding the city of Chelsea and many other cities hostage, because they're not looking at the budget the way we do. We all have our household budgets, and our budgets go up all the time, and our spending goes up. For some reason, the state's not looking at the way they're funding education in the city of Chelsea. The city of Chelsea has added more money to the budget. They've done the best they could. The state has not come up with the funding we need. It looks like a couple of things are happening here. Years ago, I fought against the charter schools, because I said to them, "You're going to take money away from the public education," and they said that wouldn't happen. Well, I guess it did happen, because I saw it in numbers. I need to have the state look at our medical costs going up, too. I mean, we have to have medical for the teachers and the administrators. The costs have gone up. Are they looking at that? No, they're not. As you can see, the city of Chelsea has done the best they could, and they're doing their part. Now we have to advocate for the state to come up for more funding and look at the formula way they educate and fund education. I'm going to do the best I can as a school committee, and we all do the best we can, to make sure cuts don't happen. But they happen, and you have to go to the state and advocate for the children and for your jobs. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you, Monica, for a wonderful presentation. You saw it in black and white, people. We need more money.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle. Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to thank the public for coming out tonight, and thank you, Monica, for the presentation. Last night, I had the chance to review the budget book, and I'm going to save my questions for next week. I just want to aim a little bit towards the high school. In 2017, we had six administrators, and in 2018, we had seven, and 2019, we had eight. And now for 2020, it's projected that you guys want seven. In FY19, we had eighty-one teachers, and in FY20, we are down to seventy-four point five. And looking at the enrollment that decreased at the high school, if you correct me if I'm wrong, it was a hundred and seventy-eight students that we lost in the past year.
Hundred and seventy-eight plus fifty-five, from October to October was a hundred and seventy-eight, and then another fifty-five to bring us up to March.
So I just want to finish off my question with a final statement. If our enrollment is going down, why aren't we doing enough to cut down administrative positions and focus more on allocating monies to save our teachers and probably use them on curricular activities and resources for our students? And I'm not targeting no administrators, but when I started at the, at the middle school, the Clark Ave, we had one assistant principal, one principal. When I started at the high school, we had one principal, another assistant principal for the eleventh and twelfth graders, a principal for the tenth graders, and a principal for the freshmen. Our enrollment's going down. We have to find other ways so we could keep departments and classes. Our class sizes honestly are, when I see these numbers, it's, you know, I think about the comments that students have gave me, that they've been sitting in classes of thirty-five students sometimes. So I just want to finalize my, my question with that. Thank you.
So I think I will be the one to answer your question. So if we look at 2013, when is when we had about the, roughly the same amount of students at Chelsea High compared to 2019-20, we had three assistant principals, then in 2000, last year, 2018, we had four. You're right, overall, we're projected, we had in 2013, seven administrators. 2018-19, last year, we had eight. We're back down to seven. So we're, we're cutting down to the total number of administrators that we had when we were down in the thirteen-hundred range. But I also want to, you know, talk about the fact that at that time in 2013, we had four instructional coaches. We're keeping the four instructional coaches. In 2013, we had two deans. We have three deans today. We're keeping the three deans. We had three social workers. We have four social workers today. We're keeping the four social workers. Guidance councils, we had seven in 2013. We have eight now, and so, and we're keeping the eight. So those are not areas that we're cutting. Those are support, definitely direct support services for our students. We felt that this year, the best way to handle cuts is to mitigate across the board, and the way we mitigated was, everybody basically had something. And so administration is taking a cut, and yes, classroom teachers are taking a cut, but other places, we're, we're doing the least harm and the least number of cuts possible. And even with the cuts, and as painful as those cuts are, and I understand that they are, those numbers in terms of the classroom average size are sizes we've actually never had in Chelsea. So it is a disenrollment issue as well as an underfunding. What I have said to the union, actually only this afternoon, these are suburban numbers, but we should have suburban numbers. So we need the state to give us our seventeen million dollars underfunding so we can have the same as the suburbs.
No, I just, for the record, can you clarify to us what, what are the seven positions that are at the high school right now, that you're keeping for 2020?
I need my high school people to check me when I'm going through these. Okay. So we have a principal, we have three, four, so that's five, four assistant principals, we have a special education coordinator, we have the Bridge Academy coordinator, and that's seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Velez?
I know it's not an easy job. Thank you, Monica, for working. And in my years here on school committee, I know budget is not just one time of the year. It's a constant work in progress. Like Dr. Burke said, it's not easy, because everybody plays an important role in the students' education. Everybody's important. So I specifically don't have any questions at the moment. I'm just taking in. But I must say, the, I'm awful the expansion of the Caminos program. I know my kids were in it, and we lost a lot of the students to charter schools after the fourth grade, because that program wasn't there. Hoping, expanding it to sixth grade, we're not going to lose the kids to the charter school. They'll stay in our district. Nothing against the French, but I was hoping more of the Spanish. I do have a lot of families that do not vote, because they can't vote, but they are constituents, and they like that Chelsea will keep providing the home language to the students, and there is more opportunities as far as job, if you are speaking Spanish. A parent came to me and said, you know, the French is, the, we tend to speak around here, it's more Haitian-French Creole, but not the French that they were taking in the school. But I'm glad that's going to stay. And of course, the autism at the early, at the ELC. I work for CAPPIC. I see the kids coming in, and I know the increase, and I know that is needed, so I fully support that also. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. Mr. DePado?
Unfortunately, these days, we have trying times in Chelsea. Chelsea is the smallest community, the poorest community in the Commonwealth, and yet, every year, the state finds a way to give it to us. Our principals, our department heads, need their crew to educate our kids. I will have more questions to ask and more things to talk about at the budget meeting, but I feel for all the principals and department heads and the superintendent that have to go through something like this. It's not fair to our kids. It's not fair to our families. If you took a Chelsea High kid and moved to another community in Winchester, they would not have no issues. The issue's here in Chelsea, because we don't have the cash, you know, and that's the bottom line. So at the budget meeting, I do have some things that I want to talk about that I think are serious, and I'll just pass on.
Thank you, Mr. DePado. Ms. Jimenez?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to all the students and parents, teachers that came tonight, and Monica for these presentations about the budget. That is something like a really, a big concern for everybody, like in terms of the, what's going on with the underfunds that is happening to many of the, of the, in, in the school. So what I'm trying to say right now is that I thank you, the superintendent, because of the effort that she has been doing amongst the community to advocate at the local and state advocacy, because it is important for us to put a face in, at the State House, to make some recommendations about the importance to have like a really derived funding for our school. Like Mr. DePado said, we are a low-income community, and if the students that we are serving are not counting, has important like a for, to be, be having some funds, that's, that's a problem there. Because we need to see that we are a poor community. If we are a poor community, it does funding can be there, present all the time, because it is something that we are providing for our students. It is for them to become a better people. So I think that I have some, also some questions that I want to leave for, for the budget meeting. In terms of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, I really commend the principal that at this moment that is running for, with sixty students instead of fifty, so that means that there's a need there. And then we need to continue advocating also to, to increase for those funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jimenez. I'd just like to state that one of the hardest things that I ever had to do when I coached was cut kids. I had forty kids try out for the freshman basketball team. I had to get down to fifteen. And to tell a kid that he couldn't play was the hardest thing I probably ever did. And now we're faced with the same thing up here, with some teachers losing their jobs. And it's not easy, you know? Unfortunately, the state with the formula has put us in a situation where cuts have to be made. I don't agree with some of the cuts that Dr. Burke is making. I will make my presentation next week at the subcommittee meeting, but I just want to let you all know that everybody that's sitting up here right now is in a tough situation, and none of us want to see anybody lose their job. So now I'm going to open up to public comment, and before you go up there, please sign in and state your name and your address. You'll have four minutes, and so we can move this along.
If you could also state, if you are a parent of a student, what grade level, and
Excuse me. Good evening. My name's Don Davenango from Medford. I am a recently retired teacher from the Chelsea Public Schools, and I'm also the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union. I want to thank the chairperson, superintendent, and the rest of the committee for allowing so many of us to be here this evening to speak. I also want to thank all of those who were involved in helping to restore the French program at Chelsea High School for next year. As we've been telling our members and students, if you advocate using your head and from your heart, you will be heard, and that was obviously the case here. Second, time permitting, at the conclusion of my words, I'll have three requests, and hopefully I'll have time to make them. We all know that if the governor's budget and the foundation budget were properly implemented in a way that demonstrated fairness for all of our students and communities, there's a very good chance that Chelsea would have adequate funds to properly educate the children of Chelsea. Sadly, we know this is not the case. I and those you'll be hearing after me, especially union members who will follow me, know that the lack of funding is neither the school committee's nor the superintendent's fault. But there is one group of people who is definitely not at fault here, the approximately six thousand students who attend the Chelsea Public Schools, and that's why we're here. As professionals, we want the very best for our students. We want to do everything within our power to make sure that when cuts in staffing occur, that these cuts are evenly distributed throughout the many departments of any school system: the teaching positions, the paraprofessional positions, the buildings and ground positions, and central office positions. In my short tenure as a teacher at Chelsea, I have seen a number of additions in growing administrative roles at both the middle school and high school. And in this time, when our budget is in such crisis, I only question, is it adequate to keep those levels at the staffing they are at? I realize that when enrollment decreases occur, decreases in the number of teaching positions must also be required. But frankly, it appears that the teaching staff take the hottest hit and sometimes the only hit. There are rumors at every budget in every city and town, whether it's the city budget or a school budget, about what positions are being cut, what positions are being added, and I'm very thrilled and grateful, and I don't see, to the presentation that was made earlier. It was very exact and very enlightening. While I'm not here to argue about what position should be cut, whether administrative, teaching, paraprofessional, or any other, my, my question is, given the crisis we are at, is there a better way to allocate the monies that we have? And now my three requests. Since no one's timing, it appears I can keep going.
You've got about another minute.
First, when considering approval of the FY20 budget, I just want to ask to ensure that positions are cut appropriately and consistently throughout. Second, moving forward, I hope the timetable of the budget process can be changed so it allows an opportunity for the school committee to hear from parents, educators, and stock, and shareholders after the final budget, which was presented tonight, is presented and before it is voted on. And finally, and I hope my information is correct, it's been reported that the city income is up by twenty-four percent, and spending is only up by eighteen percent. I strongly urge the committee to go to city council and advocate for the increase in their contribution to the, to the future of Chelsea, its students. Thank you.[1796.11] [applause]
I want to thank for the presentation as well.
Man, you're gonna state your name and address.
Yeah. My name is Monal Tessa, and I live in eight ninety-three Broadway.
Thank you.
Yeah. So today, I want to speak about the budget. I want to say that this addressing the school board, some things might sound harsh, but I hope that you stick with me until the end and really pay attention to every single word. I want to say that if you approve this budget as of today, it will be one of the most careless ways of dealing with the FY20 budget. If you approve this budget today, more than ten teachers will be leaving Chelsea Public Schools. If you approve this budget today, you will be leaving hundreds of kids, not only at Chelsea High School, but in other schools in the city, without mentors, without advocates, and even without any help when they could be engaging into the process of applying to colleges. I agree with Superintendent Burke, this is not the time to direct our anger, nor to Chelsea, nor to the city council, nor to the school board. And I do understand that this is a statewide problem. This is the time in which we enhance communication. This year, city council is not funding for Chelsea Public School with the same percent of its overall budget as it did last year. This means that there's money available, money that should be invested into education. All we have to do is ask, communicate with them. Let's not make hasty decisions that will dramatically hit the students of Chelsea, the future of this city. This is a critical issue, and it should be treated as such. Advocate and communicate with the city council officials before approving the budget, that of which we do not know how badly it will affect our schools. Chelsea High School has never been hit with a ten teacher cut. Do not tell me that you know how this will affect the students. After all, the students, they are the reason why we're all here. If you approve this budget, you will set a precedent, a precedent that every time we, Chelsea, are hit by cuts, we will turn to our teachers and sacrifice them to soothe the budget. Is that the image of Chelsea that we want to portray? Let's really think about this, and just as, I know Mr. D., he said that the city council also has some extra money. It has increased by twenty-four percent, yet they are only using eighteen percent in our public schools. Let's really ask them and see how much they can give, how much they can fund, and see if it's enough or even more to keep those teachers' positions. You're not only gonna be cutting teachers in Chelsea High School, you're gonna be crippling the future of students in Chelsea High School, crippling the future of Chelsea. We want to grow as a community, so please allow us to do so. Thank you.
My name's Alicia Smith. I live on one forty Highland. I attended Chelsea Public Schools my whole life, starting preschool at the age of three. I went to the ELC, the Hooks, the Brown, ending at CHS, graduating this year at the age of eighteen. For fifteen years, educators in all the schools have seen me grow and accomplish my goals and aspirations. It's scary seeing the upcoming budget plan for the upcoming school year. It's scary to think that this is now my fourth year in a row, that it's for a budget cut. How many more will there be? I was homeless for three years while attending Chelsea High. My dad has been incarcerated for the majority of my high school as well. It was the hardest time in high school, in life, and it still affects me, and I couldn't imagine not having the people I had around me. My social worker is there. My social worker is amazing, has helped me tremendously, same with my guidance counselor. I'll be ending high school with three different guidance counselors. Three different times, I had to explain my traumas and pains. It was picking off a scab over and over again, expecting it not to hurt. I'm attending Framingham State University in the fall of this year. I majored in English. My main goal is that I want to come back to Chelsea Public Schools and be a teacher in the same halls I walked as a student. Teachers are the most influential people in students' lives, and I cannot tell you how many teachers have changed and impacted my life to who I am today, and they're the main reason why I want to become who I want to be. But this is only my story. If you cut ten teachers, you'll be impacting hundreds of students in Chelsea High School. You'll be cutting and crumbling their future. I'm fearful that I decide to become a teacher, and my goal, my passions that I've had since my junior year will not come true. I do agree with Dr. Burke that we cannot fight each other, tear down the city, but go to a legislative level to get better funding for our schools. We need it to keep growing and thriving. It's not a want, it's the funding that we need.
Hi, my name is Catherine Anderson. I live at twenty-eight Warren Ave in Somerville, and I've been a seventh and eighth grade special education liaison at the Brown for six years. I want to thank you for hearing community concerns and reinstating the French department and one ELL teacher, and especially for your transparency with your plans for staffing decisions when we win at the State House. So first, I want to speak a bit about all that we've done to work towards fixing that funding. Last year, a group of community members and teachers went to the State House, bringing over one hundred youth to advocate. This year, we're thinking far more strategically about how to use our voice. Teachers have worked with community members from the Collaborative and Green Roots and a school committee member to develop a two-month and longer-term plan to reach out to our state legislators and make sure that we modernize the foundation budget with the PROMIS Act. Eight teachers and students advocated with the city council just this past Monday to increase the city's contribution after research revealed a twenty-four percent increase in revenue, and yet only an eighteen percent increase in education funding since 2014. We've sent emails to city councilors, state reps, and senators. We plan to return to the State House on April eighteenth and are working closely with Senator Sonia Chang Diaz's office to track how best to direct our advocacy. We know these decisions are difficult, and we have heard you asking for our advocacy. I believe that we have worked directly with community members to deliver this, and will continue to do so. It would be incredible if we could bring youth and teachers along to advocate at your side on the twenty-second, Dr. Bork. We impressed the governor with our choir at his inauguration, so I hope we can hold him accountable for how his budget and the formula are devastating our community. So tonight, I'm asking for things that are budget-neutral while we wait for the state to fund our students' human right of education, a right many of our families have traveled the length of continents and countries to receive. Our ELL teachers at the middle school level must be preserved. I'm ecstatic that we're gaining back one position. I'm asking that rather than adding a new Spanish program at the middle school level, we transfer that funding to the existing ELL positions. Our teachers, and more importantly, our students deserve and require consistency for an excellent education. Our most vulnerable students need high-quality teachers who are able to target their specific needs. We get these teachers when we can provide consistency in structure and employment from year to year. We need this consistency more than we need another UA teacher. Please, consider this budget-neutral option, preserve two more of the ELL positions, and help give our most vulnerable kids the schools they deserve.
My name is Brittany Fitzgibbon. I'm a history teacher at Chelsea High School. I live at twenty-six Bryan Street, Malden, Massachusetts. I just want to clarify, I know that we're all talking about like the sadness we feel for cutting teachers and this loss of teachers' jobs. I just want to clarify that no teacher is here tonight because we care about ourselves. As Ms. Stobar said last week, we do a great job preparing teachers for other schools. Every teacher we cut at Chelsea High School, at the middle school, at the elementary school, will go find another job elsewhere. We are here tonight only for our students. That is the only thing that matters to us. And I want to clarify about class sizes. Our students were also our top priority two years ago, when Chelsea High School teachers voluntarily entered into what was basically a de facto turnaround grant, where we agreed to teach six classes instead of five, not including I block, for no additional pay, adding about sixteen percent more classroom time into teacher schedules. This was an exhausting change. It took a lot of curriculum reconstruction. It took a lot of effort. It took a lot of exhaustion. But we did it because we were told that it would help our students by preserving teachers. That same year, we lost a history teacher, many other teachers, but most importantly, we lost our incredible Latin teacher. Every student who was lucky enough to have Ms. Reyes will be heartbroken to hear that her reaction to knowing that she was cut, even though we voted through this much more demanding schedule, was, "I feel like they tricked me into voting against my own job." Last year, we got our librarian, the entire business department, and a college counselor. My student and I, who won a trip to France this summer because our kids do amazing things like win free trips to France, we have struggled to compete with the other student teacher teams because we have not been able to complete our research without a professional librarian to support us. I don't know how to explain to you the damage it will do if you continue to cut teachers, and our students are constantly subjected to brand-new teachers, and we are constantly sending those new experienced teachers into other schools. You've already heard from two of our students, I'm sure you're gonna hear from more. But we care so deeply about our students, and I do believe they deserve the best, and I think they deserve these suburban school numbers. There has to be somewhere else where we can find this money. I agree, we need to go advocate at the state level. We need to fight against this racist, classist system that denies our students the fair share of education that they deserve. But activism starts here at the local level, and I'm so, so proud of every student that I see here tonight, fighting for themselves. Thank you, guys. We love you, and we are here for you.
Name and address. My name is Sarah Lindberg. My address is forty-seven Rosedale Road, Watertown. My name is Sarah Lindberg. I'm an ELL teacher at Clark Avenue. This is my fourth year in the district and my first year at Clark Avenue. I was at the Brown for three years. I am proud to be a Chelsea educator. Hola, mi nombre es Sarah Lindberg. Soy profesora de inglés en la escuela Clark. Este mes es mi cuarto año en Chelsea, mi primer año en Clark. Estuve en el Brown por tres años. Estoy orgullosa de ser una maestra de Chelsea. That was hard. But now and then, I use Spanish even when I am so scared to remember how hard it is to learn a second language, to remember how hard it is to be vulnerable to try to communicate in a language that is not my first language. But this is a small challenge in comparison to the mountains that our English-language learners face. Every year, we see countless families coming to our district seeking an education for their children. They come here hoping to fulfill their dreams. To them, Chelsea can provide a bridge to success in their new country. Year after year, I'm fortunate to be surrounded by incredible colleagues in the ELL department, both new and tenured educators. I'm surrounded by language teachers that spend countless hours preparing the most engaging and challenging lessons. I have faith that regardless of the resources we are provided, Chelsea educators will always strive to provide our children with a 21st century education. We will never stop. Now, I ask you, please, provide us with a budget that can adequately support the needs of our students. Because of four years of budget deficits, the ELL department in the middle school is now facing a third program change since 2015. This leaves our department constantly having to adapt to new positions, including new grade levels and teaching different proficiency levels and content areas within the department, and therefore, we must constantly create new academic units. Although my colleagues always rise to the occasion, these constant changes are difficult to adjust to. We need consistency. Our students need consistency. We need a budget that can support our teachers and our English-language learners, a budget that can allow teachers to spend many years in the district, enabling the children to build trusting relationships. We need children to be the main priority in this city. They are our future, whether they are born in Chelsea, born in the U.S., or born in a different country. To quote President Obama, "If we want America to lead in the 21st century, nothing is more important than giving everyone the best education possible, from the day they start preschool to the day they start the career." And if we want children to lead in Chelsea, nothing is more important than giving everyone the best education possible, from the day they enroll in our district to the day they graduate from our district.
Hello. My name is Katie Hodgkins. I live at three seventy-five Main Street in Everett. Thank you for allowing us all to speak this evening, and thank you for all that you do to advocate for our schools. I am the foundational ELL teacher for sixth grade at Brown Middle School. As Dr. Burke reminded us, each year for the past four years, we have cut positions in our school, and each year, it has indeed felt increasingly painful for our school communities. At the same time, it seems as though we've been investing our money in expensive data collection systems like Live School, Mastery Connect, and Swiss. These are intended to improve academic performance and behavior outcomes, but quite frankly, neither of those are getting better because technology, though helpful, can't do the work of teachers. We need people. We need to increase our retention rate of educators, not slash it, so that students can form trusting relationships over the course of their middle school years. Constantly changing the ESL model eliminates that possibility and increases instability for an already vulnerable population of young people. Even with the projected decrease in class sizes, the students we currently have still matter and still need support. Furthermore, our model this year is working. We've watched our students make incredible growth because of the consistency and co-teaching we've worked hard to shape. It's also effective because we began this year excited to be able to create units and lessons and relationships that would persevere for years to come. Our kids felt that excitement, and it served as a motivator for everybody inside our classrooms. Our district is fortunate to have teachers who want to stay in our schools, but we need a school system that fights for their ability to do so. Because the bottom line is, our kids deserve better, and they can't afford for us to continue to be reactive in our budget decisions.
Hello. My name is Megan Mary Hilldo. I am, I live at forty-one Kilby Street in Woburn, and I'm currently the seventh-grade foundational teacher at the Brown Middle School. Last year, I was the seventh and eighth-grade foundational history teacher at the Brown Middle School, and next year, if I stay, who knows what I'll be teaching? Like was said earlier, I'm not here for me, but for my students. In addition to losing half of our ELL programming to the Clark last year, these same students are asked again to face two new teaching cuts. And like Katie just said, we've built incredible relationships. We've built strength, and we've built confidence in their ability to learn. How can we expect our English-language learners to be successful if the environment that we create and teach them in changes year after year? These students, more than most, need to see the same friendly, encouraging faces in their school buildings. They need a curriculum that grows on what they've learned before. They need prepared and understanding teachers in a small classroom setting. In addition to the stress on students, every one of the teachers had to adapt to a whole new system last year. Again, this will be changing if the position flips are approved. Even with the one position re-added, that still forecuts to the middle school ELL program. Like Sarah said, this leads to changing curriculums, changing roles, and a lack of expertise. We will again be inexperienced and underprepared for our roles, and the most vulnerable population will again pay the highest price. Teacher turnover undermines student achievement. The dropout rate for ELLs at the high school is thirty-two point six percent. Yearly cuts to the ELL department are failing our students. Please reconsider changing our program for the third year in a row.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Mercado. I am a resident of Chelsea. I live at three eighteen Chestnut Street. I'm currently a teacher at the Brown Middle School, and I am a former student of the Chelsea School System. Although this is only my third year teaching at the Brown, I am well aware of the changes in our school system. As many other teachers have already mentioned, the budget has caused significant changes in our L-staff, ELL staff. I'm here asking the city to reconsider the amount of money we are investing in our students' education, because we are not supporting our most vulnerable populations. We are not providing equitable opportunities. We are not preparing our students to compete with students of neighboring communities. We all want what is best for our students so they can grow into the leaders we know they are destined to be. Please give our students the education they deserve. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Vigil. I live on Franklin Ave here in Chelsea, and I'm here today with Anita Mercado. We are two social workers that work at Chelsea High School. We're in our eighth year. We're also residents of Chelsea. We love our district. We love our community. We love our students. We love the families of our students. This isn't just our job. This is our community. This is our home. These are our neighbors. This is where our families are. Also here are many other social workers, Julie Fori from the Berkowitz, Megan Murphy from the Kelly, Liz Portnoy from Chelsea High School Outreach Worker. Lots of support staff are here. Lots of people are here because we love our community. We're here also because we feel compelled to remind the Chelsea community, our community, of the important and critical role that our social workers and outreach workers and support staff members play in supporting our students in schools. We want to thank the school committee, of course, and Dr. Burke and the central office team for the hard work you're doing on the budget. We know that making cuts is not easy. We know that you do not want to make cuts. I agree with really everything that Brittany said earlier. Something has to be done. These cuts can't continue to happen. That said, we also know that there is no proposal to make cuts to support staff, and we are here as support staff to endorse that portion, that part of things. Social workers, outreach workers, guidance counselors, we are the support and the quiet backbone for this district. We serve students in crisis. We build really, really deep relationships with students and families. We make critical assessments for safety issues. We provide deep interventions that help center and ground our students and families, and we make it possible for our students and families to stay here in Chelsea, and then, when they're having issues, to return to the class and to learn. Last year alone, social workers in Chelsea saw over twenty-four hundred students. That's almost forty percent of the district, and we have caseloads of four hundred to seven hundred, depending on what school and what position. And we're seeing forty percent of the district with caseloads like that. So, you know, the other thing I'll say is that the district has promised and prioritized over and over, both verbally and in- issues are like gripping our kids and families, like that is, and that's developmentally appropriate, but like that is the right thing to do for our students and families. So there are pieces of this budget that really are the right thing. There's definitely pieces that need work and need support, and we'll see you next week. But I do want to say thank you for adding to the budget the very positions that provide the most critical services, that directly address the trauma, that directly address students' mental health and welfare. Many of our students and families don't have access to healthcare that provides suitable access to therapy, community services, family supports. Your district's social workers are providing those services. Many of our students have emotional support services that are written to their IEPs. Your social workers are providing those services so they can remain in district and remain obtaining their access to education. We are the ones who are reaching out to community agencies and services when there's no food in the home, where parents are struggling, where there's addiction issues, where there's homelessness. We are the ones working late nights to protect and ensure safety and stability of our kids and families. We are the ones that are assessing students who are feeling hopeless and even suicidal. We are the ones that are helping kids return from hospitalizations and engage again in learning and make it through towards graduation. We're the ones providing the interventions that help kids and families turn things around so that they can reengage in learning, so that they can stay in the classroom. We are supporting the work that the teachers do, and we are equally as important, I think, as teachers. When there's community violence, when there's community loss, when there's fires in the community, when there's homelessness, we're the ones going out into the community, doing that outreach, making sure that kids and families have what they need so that they can come back to school and learn and keep getting their education. So we're essential supports across the districts.
Thirty-four minutes.
Okay. Well, I'll say one more sentence, and just that like really, we, along with the thousands of students and families that we serve each year, we support and we're grateful for the additions to support staff. So thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Myra Romero. Vivo en el noventa y nueve de la Maverick Street, aquí en Chelsea. Soy una madre de familia y estoy en representación de todos esos padres de familia que tienen la necesidad de trabajar hasta dos trabajos para poder pagar el alto costo de la vivienda en Chelsea.
So just to reiterate, she says, "Hi, my name is Myra. I live on ninety-nine, noventa y nueve, Maverick Street, and I am here to represent all the parents that work two jobs just to live in Chelsea and pay the rent in Chelsea."
Y esto es para poder mantener a sus hijos en las escuelas de Chelsea.
And this is so that our kids go to the Chelsea Public Schools.
También estoy en representación de los dueños de casa hispanos de la ciudad de Chelsea.
And I'm also representing all of the Latino or Hispanic homeowners in Chelsea.
Esta noche simplemente quiero preguntar y también expresar mi tristeza.
Today, I would like to ask the question and express my concerns.
Al escuchar que están hablando de cortar posiciones, de remover estudiantes, hacer un solo salón de clase.
And to, wait, ¿qué dijiste ese vuelto?
Estoy escuchando de cortes de posiciones, de mover estudiantes a otros salones.
I'm listening to all of the cuts from the teachers and the administrators, but also just moving kids into like one single classroom.
Para poder ahorrar dinero en el presupuesto.
Just so that the school saves money.
Como dueña de casa, hace cinco años aproximadamente, vi un aumento en mis taxes.
Since five years ago, since I became a homeowner, I saw an increase in taxes from the city.
Mi pregunta es, si van a invertir mis taxes en restauración de parques, en restauración de lugares históricos, en espacios abiertos, ¿por qué no invertir una porción de mis taxes en las escuelas?
So her question is, if you're going to spend, if you're going to increase the taxes from the city, and you're going to put this money towards renovating parks and keeping historical places, why don't you move this money into the schools?
Me gustaría también expresarles a los del comité que estaría muy interesada en que estas reuniones se hicieran en horarios, que los padres pudieran estar disponibles.
And I would also like to express my concern, to ask, how come or why doesn't this meeting be on a day that all of the parents in Chelsea are available?
Porque muchos padres no saben qué es lo que está pasando con el presupuesto de las escuelas.
Because a lot of parents don't know what is happening with the budget from the schools.
Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué no invertir más de lo que nosotros mismos pagamos en la ciudad?
So her question is, how come the city isn't allocating money towards the school as much as they should?
Muchos inversionistas están viniendo a la ciudad de Chelsea.
A lot of investors are coming into the city of Chelsea?
Hay muchos que no son residentes de Chelsea, solo vienen a lucrarse de los pobladores de la ciudad.
A lot of them don't live in Chelsea. They just come into Chelsea and they just renovate buildings.
¿Por qué no pedir un porcentaje a estos inversionistas para poder invertir en nuestras escuelas?
Excuse me. Can you just tell that she only has like ten more seconds?
Okay.
Muchas gracias por la atención a mis preocupaciones y a mis comentarios.
Let me just rephrase what she said. So the last part of what she said was, how, why don't we ask these investors to put a percentage of the money that they're investing into the schools? And then she said, "Thank you."
Good evening. My name's Lisa Lineweaver. I live at eighteen Franklin Street here in Chelsea. I've got a fourth grader and a sixth grader in Chelsea Public Schools at the Brown and the Kelly, and I'm also the principal here at the Kelly School. I'm really proud to be part of this group here tonight, and proud of all of us, because when I listen first to Dr. Burke's exhortation to all of us to not be fighting amongst ourselves, but fighting against the problem, I feel like that's been so loud and clear. And I wish that we could maybe just pipe this, a feat of this meeting, straight to Governor Baker and the committee at the State House, because I feel like what they would hear is a community that is united around the right things, right? We're not talking about like, what's good for kids in the abstract. I'm hearing people talking about the ways in which the relationships that teachers form and the relationships that social workers form are part of a whole community-wide web of support for some of the most vulnerable kids in the state. And that the work that our administrators do and that our teaching teams do to be able to build curriculum and to be able to build experiences that help kids understand what it is that this community believes that they can be in the future is something I want our governor to hear. And so, thanks, everybody. I'm proud to be part of you here. On a slightly lighter note, I do want to bring some good news back to the school committee, because the last time I stood here speaking to you a few weeks ago was to present about the Camino's expansion. And I just wanted to bring back to you the feedback that I have gotten from lots and lots of families as we've been sharing the news of sort of public support that you gave that evening for that plan. We've had since that time, we've taken steps to begin the enrollment process for more of the fourth-grade students on the waitlist from all four schools in the complex who may be interested in joining Camino's. We've begun the information sharing and assessment process for those kids. I've also been fielding lots of calls from families who are like, "I hear it's growing at the ELC next year. Can we get on the waitlist?" And are beginning that process. The reason I want to come back and share that with you is just to emphasize, this is a program that is one our families believe in, our families are committed in and appreciate your public support for. I think it's also part of this larger solution of how do we keep more kids in Chelsea rather than losing them at that critical gap between fourth grade and fifth grade, right? We've got families saying, "Well, I'd really like to stay. This is something that's going to keep me." And then being able to move straight into a pathway where they can continue that dual-language skills all the way towards the seal of illiteracy, I think is a real unique selling point. There's not something like that at our charter school competitors. There's not something like that in any of our neighboring districts. And it's something that I think builds that strong sense of what is this community for and what does this community value? So thank you, and thank you all.
My name is Joseph Terrell. I live on one-forty-nine Sherrill Street. I'm a little sick. I'm also a little nervous, so, you know, stick with me through it. So I'm a junior at Chelsea High. I've been, I'm fairly involved, I think, in a lot of things. I'm in class office. I've been a class officer for three years. I'm part of Chelsea Youth Commission. I've been a part of Chelsea Track and Field for three years, and I've been a part of Chelsea Public Schools my whole life. And I've seen the amazing things that I've received through, you know, meeting teachers. I've had the pleasure of meeting people like Coach Martino behind me, and him being such a good support for me in the sense that, you know, he was always there for me as a teacher. And then I've had the pleasure of having my advisor and now my teacher, Ms. Fitzgibbon, with me, giving me amazing, you know, like teaching me in ways that I've never experienced in Chelsea High. But also, I've experienced to see like my teachers leave me, and my teachers look for better jobs, because obviously, the second that someone hears, "Oh, you might be cut", an intelligent person will obviously look for a Plan B, because that's what you're taught growing up, to always look for a Plan B. So of course, we're going to lose these amazing teachers that have, you know, I feel like I'm a fairly educated student, honor roll. Like, you know, like, yeah. Like, that's, you know, not to give myself a pat on the back, but like, you know, I see these teachers walk away, not because, of course, like not because they don't love the students, like I appreciate what Ms. Fitzgibbon just said. She's not, she'll find a job elsewhere. What she cares about is the students. Like, I don't care if she finds a job elsewhere. I care about my teachers. I care about where they are. I want them to see me walk across, you know, the stage. I want them to see me receive my diploma. I want Ms. Fitzgibbon. I want Ms. Asher. I want Coach Martino. I want, you know, like Coach Albert to see all these amazing things. Like, I want them to, you know, to ask me, "Can I write your recommendation?" I want them to, you know, be able to, be like, "I'm excited that you're going to your dream college. I'm excited that you're going to do these amazing things." And I think it's very, it's very, it's very difficult for me to see the position that my teachers are put in, especially now, you know, not to come at like administration or anything, but like, how many like positions for superintendent do we have? We have like five? Last time I checked, like, I think when I was like in fifth grade, we had like one superintendent and one assistant, and that was it. That was it. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's all I heard. You know, I'm finally excited and I'm happy to see a principal that I actually see every day and looks at me and is like, "Howdy, Joseph. How's your day? How are you doing?" I'm happy to see, you know, my own vice principal, Ms. Murphy, look at me and she's like, "Hello, Joseph. How are you? How are you doing?" And genuinely care about my well-being, along, you know, with the support staff. I've had three different guidance counselors in my time at Chelsea Public Schools, at Chelsea High, right? You know, not a single one has been truly connected with me until the one this year, Ms. Padilla. And she's been a great help, and you know, she's helped me with a lot of things. And, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we, my parents vote for you guys to lead us and to protect us and, you know, to speak for us as representatives, and I think, you know, you guys should go and talk to the city council, because I know there's money in there. I've gone to the meetings. I know there's money in the city that can be used instead of, you know, building up a condominium, setting up basically gentrification, allowing all these things to happen, so you know, like the community in Chelsea, you know, because what is Chelsea? Chelsea's a group of minorities, you know, and what it seems to be like happening is that, you know, we're kind of like gentrifying into this place and creating, you know, this place like a suburb. We're not suburbs. We're urban. We're a city. We're full of like bright, you know, young, different, like diverse people. You know, Chelsea should be this. We should embody this. I don't, I wanted to be a teacher my whole life, but now looking at like what's happening to my own teachers, I don't even know if that's a good thing for me to want, because maybe by the time I come back here, there won't be anything for me to teach. There won't be anyone for me to teach. You know, I thank you for your time. I thank you for all your hard work, but I please ask you, I please you guys, to please go and talk, you know, to the people. Go talk to the, like, city council. Go talk to the governor. They'll listen. They'll speak. You know, they'll help us, because they've always helped us. Thank you.
Ron Schmidt, Principal, Chelsea Opportunity Academy. I live at Orchard, forty-two Orchard Drive in Stowe, Massachusetts. Oh, to follow a student. I can't say how amazing it is to be here and see students, see some family members, teachers, and the administration here advocating for having better financial circumstances for our schools. And I can't begin without thanking the school committee, Mr. Chairman, Mary Burke, and the school committee for the support of Chelsea Opportunity Academy. We are up to sixty-three students, probably sixty-five by tomorrow, and when they, when they spent a day at Benjamin Franklin Institute of Technology and to see their eyes light up at their possibilities, and these were students who had actually given up on the possibility of a diploma and graduation, is something that I have to say is priceless. But I'm here tonight to advocate for my administrative colleagues at the high school. And that's not to say that, to undervalue the teaching staff and the difficulty with cuts, because anyone who works in our district works very hard, and it takes a very special person to work in Chelsea. The administrative role at Chelsea High School, which I did for fifteen years, it starts often before seven in the morning, and the end time, well, that's anyone's guess. Rarely is it before five, often beyond six or seven o'clock. It's a job, we have job descriptions, but there really isn't a job description, because whatever comes at an administrator simply needs to be taken on, and that's what they do, day in and day out. The, when issues come up, when crises come up, that's who you see taking action, an immediate action, and providing that support and getting our school back together with support staff, with teachers, so that we can be whole again. Many of you were witness to that just a couple weeks ago, when you were present with the evening we did Circles, and a real testament to what our school community can do. And that work is led by the administration and our support staff. Administrators sacrifice a tremendous amount when it comes to time with our families, maybe and others. We are often in school events. We are often at, working late, and I know personally, it has created challenges in my life with the amount of time I've been able to spend with my wife and kids. But like my wife says, "You don't have two kids. You have all the kids that you work with every day." And that is truly what it feels like. I'm probably not telling you anything you don't know, but this, the possibility of cutting an additional administrative position at this time at Chelsea High School is a personal concern for me, in that I still feel a tremendous connection and support as students transfer in and out of Chelsea Opportunity Academy. When the Chelsea High School administrative team was experienced and we had been working together for years, we could understand each other's roles. We could cover for each other. Ms. Almquist knew what I was doing. I knew what she was doing. We could support each other. Today, we have an administrative team of which four are experiencing their first year, and that is a huge challenge, and that, we need to be careful. To cut an additional position, we would have to redefin- evening we did Circles. And a real testament to what our school community can do. And that work is led by the administration and our support staff. Administrators sacrifice a tremendous amount when it comes to time with our families, if you can others. We are often in school events. We are often at working late. And I know personally it has created challenges in my life with the amount of time I've been able to spend with my wife and kids. But like my wife says, you don't have two kids. You have all the kids that you work with every day. And that is truly what it feels like. I'm probably not telling you anything you don't know, but this, the possibility of cutting an additional administrative position at this time at Chelsea High School is a personal concern for me in that I still feel a tremendous connection and support as students transfer in and out of Chelsea Opportunity Academy. When the Chelsea High School administrative team was experienced and we had been working together for years, we could understand each other's roles. We could cover for each other. Ms. Almquist knew what I was doing. I knew what she was doing. We could support each other. Today, we have an administrative team of which four are experiencing their first year. And that is a huge challenge and that, we need to be careful. To cut an additional position, we would have to redefine what it means to say overwhelmed and challenged. So I ask that you, maybe there will be a time for that. I ask that it not be this year and that we continue with the proposed administrative team for next year. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Committee. My name's Adam Weldy. I live at 97 Hill Street in Malden, although I feel like most of my time except sleeping is at 180 Walnut Street. I'm the Assistant Principal at Wright Academy and the President of the Chelsea Administrators' Association. And I really would like to give just a quick shout out to the other members who are here. So if there are members of the CAA who are here tonight, would you mind just standing up for a second to show them who we are and that you're here to support? Thank you, folks. The Association is made up of some truly dedicated individuals who are all, we're all behind-the-scenes workers. We do things that no one really will ever see and no one will really fully ever understand besides our principals. That ranges from relationship development both with students and staff, supporting our principals and running the buildings, managing student issues, writing and revising curriculum, units of instruction, acting as both culture builders and academic leaders in the schools across the district. And in many ways, the folks who make up the CAA, the coordinators, the assistant principals in particular, have a little bit of everything on their plate. I had a student who left us in 8th grade last year and despite the fact, went up to Chelsea High, despite the fact that my nameplate on the door says Assistant Principal, said to me on the way out, "You're the best guidance counselor I ever had." And I still to this day don't think he knows that I was his Assistant Principal because we were the catch-all. You know, we take, when our social workers and guidance counselors are incredibly overworked because of their, their own caseload, you know, we take a lot of those issues and we make sure that we can keep everyone doing what they need to be doing. So with that incredible increase in social, emotional, traumatic, even political issues in our world, we're constantly doing a little bit more with less. And I'm happy to be here representing our membership of about 28. At one time, our membership was a little closer to 35. We love what we do. And I can say, as a former school committee member in Malden myself for a number of years, I know how hard and how emotional I think budget time is, especially when you're asked to make any cuts and pretty much every year we're asked to make some kind of cut. So our reason for being here today is not to say you should cut one position over another or to prioritize one over another. It's really just to say how much we love what we do and how much we like being the behind-the-scenes workers for all of the amazing folks that are here today, the students, the teachers, the principals. And, you know, we love our Chelsea students and we hope that we're all given the opportunity to continue to work for them next year. And in particular, just want to say a quick point for our assistant principals. Our team at Chelsea High School came up with some anecdotal evidence that we'd love to share with you. And it's something like this came across my seat when I was sitting there one day years ago, a long time ago. And it is, the first page, you each got a folder, is the job description, the role and the duties of an assistant principal, which was written in HR speak for the posting. And the next nine pages are the ever-growing list of what assistant principals do on a daily, weekly, and yearly basis as told through the anecdotal evidence that they provided, but also the things that teachers have contributed, students have contributed, they've seen us do on a daily, weekly, and yearly basis. So we hope that our assistant principal teams will continue to stay strong for years to come and continue to do the work for the community that we love. So thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Mark Martino. I live at 8 Harborview Road in Nahant and my voice is cracking. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm nervous like Joseph. Budget cuts and people's livelihoods and talking about people's livelihoods are never comfortable to talk about. And you have a very difficult decision to make in front of you. But I, oh, I didn't, I've been in Chelsea Public Schools now, this is my eighth year. My first seven years, I was a teacher. I taught history and it's great to see so much of the history department is represented here. I was also a three-season coach at Chelsea High School. I coached cross-country and track and field where we had quite a few wins if I remember right. This is my first year as an assistant principal at Chelsea High School. In all my years, in all my years as a teacher, I never considered or had any idea what it took to run a school like Chelsea High School. I literally would just run up to people and say, "Hey, I want to do this. Hey, I want to do that." And they would say, "Okay, go ahead." I didn't know what that meant. In my new role as an assistant principal, I've really come to appreciate the magnitude and the responsibility that comes with this job and it is a lot. I never expected to be doing a lot of the things that I am doing every single day. Coming into this role, I didn't, I couldn't have dreamed of the amount of interpersonal relationships and conversations that I would have on a single day. One day, I tried to count it and I got somewhere near 100. I talked to over 100 people in one day and none of that was on my agenda for the day. And my agenda is full. Just ask anybody who tries to grab a meeting with me, right? Where you got to plan two weeks out because we are doing so many wonderful things at Chelsea High School. So to be fair, I think it's important that you understand what goes into our role. We know what teachers do. Every student has a teacher. I love my teachers, but not every student has any idea what I'm doing. Well, some of them do. And teachers are amazing, but we are there to support them. Joseph talked about teacher retention. We need time to establish relationships with our teachers. Okay? We do that with more, not less. People quit bosses, they don't quit jobs. And if you cut the amount of bosses, sorry, bad language, but you're cutting those bonds as we're trying desperately to hold on to teachers. Teacher retention has always been something that I deeply cared about as a teacher at Chelsea High School. Here's my chance to do something about it. Give me a chance. Freshman retention is something that I've always cared about as a freshman teacher seven years at Chelsea High School. We're making, we're showing some success. We're doing some things that we've never done. Okay, but we're, sorry, I'll get back. I was told not to go off script. But I'm not-
Mark, they know you.
All right, thank you. You have a list of everything that we do and none of what you got has anything to do with establishing relationships with teachers and students. That is the number one thing that we should be doing. So please, when you're making your decision, understand what could happen if we go a different direction. Okay? I love our students. No one can, no one here can say, "I don't love our students." I love our teachers. Okay? I want the best for everybody. Thank you.
My name is Adele Levaruski. I live at 20 Eisenhower Road in Peabody. However, just like Adam, my family thinks I live at 300 Crescent Avenue. I am the principal of the Hooks Elementary School. I'm a graduate of the Chelsea Public Schools and I'm proud to say that my entire teaching and administration career has been in Chelsea. You don't want to know how many years? It's been a lot of years. My journey as an administrator began in the late 1990s. Although I love my career as a bilingual teacher, I want to make more of a difference in the lives of more children. And so after much encouragement, I applied for the position as the Assistant Principal of the Sokolowski School. I never really understood how much time I would devote to my position. Luckily, my children were older and so it wasn't like they missed me at all. But I thought that as an assistant, even as an assistant principal, I was doing things that I never imagined doing. I was playing nurse. I was playing counselor. I was playing counsel for teachers, for students. I was talking to parents all the time. It was just something that was, that I loved. Administrators, like many staff members, devote so many hours. It's not just an 8 to 2 or an 8 to 3 job. I applaud my colleagues and I applaud all the CPS staff. And I want to mention that there are some administrators here, some principals here, so I want to ask them to stand. As an administrator, many difficult decisions need to be made. I imagine Dr. Burke and the members of the Central Office Team faced many hard decisions as they attempted to balance the budget, hoping for the smallest impact on our students. So we could go on and I could repeat everything that everyone said tonight about, you know, we need our teachers, we need our administrators, we need our social workers, we need our support staff, we need everything. But instead, I found a story to tell you. This story is about perspective and adversity and how you view the things that are happening in your life. There are two sides to every coin, that everyone has a story to tell, that your perception is your reality. So many times we get caught up in our own dilemmas and drama that we forget many of our own truths that we subscribe to are based on our point of view, our perspective. A young woman went to her mother and told her mother about her life and how things were hard for her. It seemed as one problem was solved and a new one arose. Her mother filled three pots of water and placed carrots in one, eggs in the second, and coffee beans in the third. She let them boil for 20 minutes. As she took out the carrots, eggs, and coffee, she asked her daughter to look closely. She felt the soft carrots, pulled the shell off the hard-boiled egg, and sipped the coffee. The mother explained that each object faced the same adversity, boiling water, but each reacted differently. The carrot went in strong and hard, but softened and became weak. The egg went in fragile, but the inside became hard. The ground coffee beans were unique. They had changed the boiling water. Are you a carrot, an egg, or a coffee bean? The carrot seems strong, but with pain and adversity, becomes soft and loses its strength. The egg starts hard, soft inside, but changes with heat. After a difficult financial decision, do you become hardened and stiff, where you have the same look on the outside but are tough with a stiff spirit?
Adele.
Or?
You have about 10 more seconds.
Okay, I'll go fast. Are you a coffee bean? The bean that changed the water, the very substance that brought the change and the pain? When the water got hot, it released fragrance and flavor. I believe that all of our administrators, all of our teachers, everyone in the Chelsea Public Schools are coffee beans. Thank you.
I'm Jocelyn Post, 91 Memorial Park Ave. And first of all, I appreciate the transparency provided with the presentation tonight. You may already be bored of hearing all of us speak, dozens of people, the people who you are affecting by cutting teachers. For each person here, there are dozens out there working, not being able to voice their opinions, students, teachers, the citizens of Chelsea. I am here to speak for our biggest supporters, the teachers, the ones we build strong connections with throughout all of our years at Chelsea Public Schools. I have grown to build a trusting relationship with every teacher I've ever had, Ms. Enriquez in 1st grade, to Ms. Webb in 8th grade, to Ms. Salima now in 12th grade, my last year here at Chelsea High. The reason I am able to succeed and learn is because of the lasting relationships I have with the teachers that don't get cut. Similar to Alicia and Joseph, I've had three guidance counselors throughout my high school years as well. And it's hard to rebuild that same connection with the new counselor year after year. And with the statistics provided earlier, it is shocking to me that cuts are being made to the exact areas that we and you are all trying to improve. Whether we like it or not, our needs are different than other cities. Chelsea is a refugee city and a safe haven, so it is inevitable that we are going to have an influx of new citizens. We have to prioritize the needs of our city without comparing ourselves to other places. We cannot expect to create an atmosphere where students feel comfortable to excel when cuts are being made to those exact areas. I know it will affect me personally next year since I will be graduating, but I cannot stand the thought of our future classes having to find a new trusting support system every year. You know us students are here at all the meetings to not only help ourselves, but our teachers, so that they can witness the success that they have been a huge help in. And we know it's not your fault that there isn't money to put into the budget, but you know we are here to help you find other ways with the city council and advocating at the state level. Thank you.
My name is Lex Matthews. I am the principal of Chelsea High School. I live at 42 Chesley Road in Newton, Massachusetts. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk tonight. It has been a tremendous pleasure this year to work in Chelsea. That's the first thing I want to say. I'm here this evening also to state that any budget cuts to a school system are hard. And this is the fourth consecutive year of cuts in Chelsea Public Schools. Significant cuts. This year, the cuts are hitting CHS particularly hard due to a compounding factor of decreasing enrollment and the loss of a grant. Central Office and I have identified the areas to cut based on clear and objective data as well as ongoing feedback from stakeholders. It is painful. Nonetheless, you charge me with leading and running my school, Chelsea High School, and these are the cuts I feel we can live with and still provide the highest quality education for our students. I do believe most of the cuts will be naturally absorbed due to non-renewals, retirements, and teachers making life choices not to return to teaching. I'll also state that my administrative team will be already reduced by one position. I understand the need due to decreasing enrollment, but as a first-year principal, learning the high school, learning the Chelsea way of doing things, I ask that we only take one administrative position this year. I really need my administrative staff to be able to do the multitude of things, of requirements from the federal, state, and local governments. The demands on administrators are huge. The hours are very long. And I want to remind this school committee that these, all these administrators are year-round employees. I've also benefited tremendously from the support I've received from Central Office as a first-year principal. And I did want to say, schools have changed a lot in the last five or 10 years and without administrators to run, coordinate, all the extra services, the extra things that benefit our school and our students, without administrators, those things go away. Administrators are critical for making sure we get and we keep getting things like the Sontag Partnership, where we're running, through this partnership, we have Acceleration Academies during February and April vacation for English and math. And this boosts students' proficiency on the MCAS, which is a huge achievement. It opens up scholarship opportunities for students. Also, Bunker Hill Community College, without administrators to run the program, it goes away. We have hundreds of students who now get a leg up on college, reduce their college debt, and become aware, even while in high school, that they can be college students. So very important. And without administrators, that program doesn't run. Upward Bound, without an administrator, it doesn't run. This is a partnership with BU, provides students with the opportunity to further grow in science. And Summer Search, we all know 30 to 40 CHS students every summer. They travel throughout the U.S. They have mentoring opportunities. They get college application assistance and other ongoing support for college. And these are just some of the examples of how administrators bring in opportunities to the high school that wouldn't be there without administrators. So I also want to conclude by communicating how tremendous it is to see the passion, the dedication, and the love for Chelsea students that we have in this room right now. Thank you.
My name is Sire Coretto and I reside at 834 Broadway here in Chelsea. Before giving my little speech, I have a request today and my request is that if there is a parent or somebody speaking that English is not their first language, that we give them twice the time. It's a suggestion for the future. I know that-
We did give her more time.
Thank you. So before I start my little speech, I apologize if I cry. I'm an emotional wreck right now. But I want to thank Ms. Rampino, Ms. Borgard, Ms. Slater, Ms. Palzum, Ms. Krensky, Ms. Walsh, Mr. Datolo, Ms. Padilla, Ms. Murphy, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Bennington, Mr. Millmore, Ms. Yu, Ms. Mahoney, Ms. Asher, Ms. Fitz, Coach Weaver, Coach Fay, Mr. Matthews, and Ms. Asma, Guidance Counselor. Those are just 20 teachers that I could think of at the top of my head. And I want to thank them because thanks to them, I will be attending college. Mahoney, Ms. Asher, Ms. Fitz, Coach Weaver, Coach Fay, Mr. Matthews, and Ms. Asma, guidance counselor. Those are just 20 teachers that I could think of at the top of my head. And I want to thank them, because thanks to them, I will be attending college this fall. I'm sorry, I'm a really ugly crier, as you can see. I'm sorry. And it's not just me, there are three other students here. I got the Posse Scholarship, along with three other amazing students here, who are advocates. And not just Posse, we have people going to Ivies, like Dartmouth, BU, Tufts, and a lot of amazing schools. And if it wasn't for my teachers, I would not be here, and I would not be going to college. And I take so much pride in coming from Chelsea, and I can't wait to be in Kentucky in the middle of nowhere, and telling everybody how proud I am to come from Chelsea, where these educators, 20 people that I thought of at the top of my head are the reason why I am here today and why I have the opportunity to be a leader in a whole other state. And I know that cutting, thank you, that cutting teachers is a hard decision, but I urge you to work together and find other ways, because at the end of the day, they are what determines our future. I currently have a sister at the high school who's a junior and a six-year-old brother at the ELC. And I call them my kids, even though they're not my kids, at the Hooks. I go to the buddy program, and I have kids in third and fourth grade who I get to tutor, and they are also English learning students. And I know that they are the future of Chelsea, along with my own family members and friends who have a lot of students within Chelsea. So, I urge you guys to work with us and help other ways that, you know, doesn't necessarily revolve around cutting teachers. So, thank you to the 20-plus teachers that helped me get to where I am today. Thank you.
Sarah. I didn't hear what school you're going to, what college you're going to.
I'm going to Center College.
My name's Alyssa Kopeck. I live at 11 Max Ave in Cambridge. I'm a 7th-grade ELA and transitional ESL teacher at the Brown Middle School. You've already heard from some of my colleagues tonight, and it won't be the last time you hear from us. But tonight, I want to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to hear so many voices of our students tonight. As you just saw, we have students who have the power of communication, and it's for that reason that I want to speak tonight. As you heard from my colleagues, specifically our foundational teachers at the Brown, there is a need for consistency and expertise in our foundational ESL teaching staff, and that need is huge. We see it every day in every foundational classroom. But that need does not stop at the foundational classrooms. At the Brown, the majority of our students are ESL students or former English language learners, which means that we are constantly watching most of our students to ensure that they are developing the language skills that they deserve to have as a member of the Chelsea community, and that they can one day use to share their opinions, like we've heard so many do tonight. I teach 78 students, and 54 of them are designated as Level 2 through 5 English language learners, and another handful are former language learners who I monitor. Cutting teachers in the ESL department at the Brown Middle School does not stop at the foundational teachers. That effect does not stop at our foundational students. It ripples out and affects every student at the Brown, especially our transitional students. These are students who have overcome some of the most difficult challenges and learned a language while doing so. They have acquired their basic skills, but they need more support. They need that consistency, and they need that expertise, too. These cuts will affect our transitional students. And if we don't think about all students at the Brown, at all of our middle schools, and throughout Chelsea, and their needs, we are not going to help them continue the incredible growth that they have made, and help them overcome even more challenges that they will face. They deserve expertise, they deserve consistency, and they deserve ESL teachers who know what they're doing and who know how to teach them and support them in their language development. These cuts will not help them. Thank you.
Jane Abramovich, teacher at Chelsea High, and I live at 12 Cordis, Charles Town. We teach our students that when presenting an argument, to also present a counter-argument. At this and other public meetings, you have shown evidence for why we need, we must, to cut teachers, such as the slide with reduced teacher-student ratios. We're here today for why we need administrators at the school. We have asked to share with us other examples of cost buckets that were considered for cuts, but have not, we have not seen this addressed again in today's presentation. What was the rationale for not presenting other ratios, such as central administration and other variable non-personnel cost budget line items? What can we do to receive this information and have the other non-personnel cost buckets discussed, so we can be comfortable with the decisions being made? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, the public speaker is closed. I just want to say, before we adjourn, thank you to all who showed up tonight, a lot of administration, the students. You know, what I did recognize tonight is that you've got seniors that are leaving and get up there and spoke for the kids that are coming behind them, you know. I want to thank, too, the teachers. Came in from Charles Town, Wogan, and Watertown. You guys are in the trenches every day dealing with the kids, you know. It's a thankless job, but the school committee thanks you very much, because it's not easy teaching here. We understand that. We know with the administration, too, your days are very long, and they're hard. To tell you the truth, I would never go into teaching today. Times have changed so much, you know.
We don't want to say that in front of the children, we want them to go into teaching.
Well, they could go into teaching, but anyways, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who showed up tonight and spoke, and for what you do for our children of Chelsea. So, on that, me- I'm gonna, okay, if, sure, go ahead.
So, tonight, I observed a few things: agreements, disagreements, tears, courage, passion, and so much advocacy. And I thank everyone here in the room for sharing your concerns, your questions, and your comments. Now, while there are differences in the room, there are a few things we also have in common. We love Chelsea. We believe in our students, and we will continue the fight for our students. Let's continue this advocacy and join me and the others, including community members, students in the room, teachers, school committee members, on Student Advocacy Day on April 18. Thank you.
Before I adjourn, does anybody else want to speak?
Mr. History teacher? Mr. Arbor, I believe it is, your last name? Yes, you? I always had a hard time pronouncing your name, but I can say that, yes, because of you and many other teachers in this room, Kimberly Alvarez went to high school. You was very disciplined in keeping her in the cross-country. And now I see where she get all the talkative, not only from me, but from your end, too. But I would say, just like my colleagues, it is something that we, as a school committee, we get money from the city. And those money that are allocated from the city are the monies that we have to vote on the 28. So, we really urge you to call city council as well, not only city council, but also the city manager. And for everybody who's watching in the home, in the house, you know, we know there is a lot of people that have the power to call the city council from each district, but also the city manager, so that we don't get into these crucial timelines that we have to vote. If we don't vote, then we're gonna have no money to continue to run the schools. We're gonna continue, you know, like, it's gonna be hard. And all the recommendations that we get from the administration are the recommendations that are, you know, it breaks our heart. And thank you so much for all the efforts that you make to teach our students and my kids, because I know that you have a lot to do in where they are right now. Thank you so much.
Okay, before we adjourn, Dr. Burke would like to speak. You have four minutes.
I've got the timer. No, I will make it very brief. So, I just want to make sure that we understand one thing, you know, because I am the one bringing the recommendations on the cuts, don't misinterpret, you know, I'm cutting an administrator. Don't misinterpret that means that I'm against my administrators. Don't misinterpret because I'm bringing teachers forward on a cut, that I'm against my teachers. Very much like Mr. Martino, I love, we love our teachers, I love, we love our students, I love, we love our administrators. We're in this together, but this is a difficult, difficult lift, and it is the fourth year. So, I can't emphasize it enough. I was at the State House today with Alice Peish, she's one of the co-chairs, Representative Peish, one of the co-chairs on the Joint Education Committee. They are listening, but they've got to hear it more, because it's almost like we've gone into a spring apathy, or almost spring. You can't be apathetic, you've got to keep those emails and those calls going weekly. Thank you.
Okay, this person- Anybody want to second that motion?
She did.
Okay, moving, is adjourned. Finally-